All right, wanna call the reg- well, reschedule council meeting for May to order. Thank everyone for coming out and everyone that's watching online as well. Wanna open up by normal fashion with prayer followed by a pledge, so we'll ask, uh, Mr. Woods and he will lead us in prayer.
Yes, sir. I understand. Our Father, our God, we thank you again now for all of your many blessings that you've already bestowed upon. And thank you, oh God, for what you've already done. Thank you for what you're doing and yet still gonna do. God, again, we thank you for this meeting on tonight. We thank you for America. We thank you for all of our council members. Thank you for all of our department here. And most of all, God, we thank you for keeping all of our workers safe. God, you're just an awesome God, you're just a good God. And there's still so many that stands in need of so many different things. God, you know what we all stand in need of because you're a great God. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Place the flag with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you will call a roll, Ms. Clark.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Golden.
Here.
Mr. Lael.
Here.
Ms. McKinnney.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Ray.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Woods.
Here.
We have one set of minutes to approve from our regular scheduled council meeting in October. Hope everyone will review those minutes if there's any, not any changes or anything to those minutes. We ask for a motion to approve.
I move, we approve the minutes.
Motion, uh, missed, moved a second by Ms. McKenna, all in favor of cash or votes. Opposed, white votes.
I think it's Miller.
Maybe I went over to Miller.
Good.
Make it look again another, them things couldn't cause much.
There you go, there you go.
Uh, all right, motion, motion carried. Uh, under my report, well, let everybody know we'd be closed on the twenty-sixth for Memorial Day. Also, on Thursday, if anybody would like to come out, we'll have our employee, uh, one of our employee wellness days and fun days at the golf course. If anybody wanna join us, it's tee off at nine-thirty, right? And lunch is at, what time? Eleven?
Twelve.
Eleven, twelve, just come out there and we'll be out there. All right, so that's on Thursday, if y'all, any of the council members wanna, wanna join us for that. Uh, do have a proclamation here from the, uh, for the National Children's Mental Health Acceptance Day proclamation. Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and young adults and families today is fundamental to the citizens of the city of Bolivar. And whereas the need for co- co- cooperative of mental health services for children, youth, and young adults and families place upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being. And whereas the Tennessee Voices through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families in our community. Now therefore be resolved that I, Julian A. McTisick, mayor of the city of Bolivar, do hereby proclaim May eighth, twenty-twenty-five as Children's Mental Health Acceptance Day in the city of Bolivar, Tennessee. And urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in the meeting of every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in observance of such exercises that will appoint the people of the city of Bolivar with the fundamental necessities of programs, support services for children, youth, young adults with mental health needs, as well as their families. Uh, signed by yours, uh, Julian, Mayor Julian A. McTisick Senior. On behalf of the Bolivar City Council, I do think we have some representatives here, uh, with the organization. If y'all would like to come or if anybody would like to say anything about what y'all do, we'd love to hear from you at this time.
Thank you, I'm the community engagement specialist.
I'm the community engagement specialist at Tennessee Voices. It is a nonprofit organization for mental health. And we do focus on children's mental health the most because we know if we start early, we can get 'em early and we can start developing those healthy practices and we have better outcomes. And so, we do have a Children's Mental Health Coalition here in Bolivar. And I do have Commissioner Miller here with me, she is a part of the coalition. Also, Mr. Dylan Hill. And we do appreciate you for signing the, signing the proclamation. And we do look forward to having more community members to join our coalition. We do meet once a month. Um, we like to meet in person. We do try to meet, um, different cities within the county so that we can have a more, a better impact on all of our children in the entire county. So, we meet once a month, like I said, um, right now we're meeting every third, every third Monday at five-thirty P.M. And we are open to, um, any of you guys' businesses that would like to have us to come there to meet. And we would love to have your attendance and to help create more positive experiences for our children here in Hardeman County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hold on one second, I gotta get y'all. It's all right, it's all right. Thank you. All right, that completes my report, uh, any public comments? All right, we move to standing committed reports. All right, on the B.E.A. report, move the May board meeting to May the twenty-seventh, four-thirty. The board approved the October first rate increase of one point four percent. Uh, with the cost, uh, rate payers an additional two dollars per month. This is done to keep up with the rising cost of materials. Accepted a bid for fair construction to build a pole shed at the lot on North Madison to store the extra fiber rails for maintenance. And the board reappointed Mr. Jones, so it's new, new five-year term on the board starting July one that will need approval by the city council concludes the B.E.A. report. Uh, move on to, uh, utility, Mr. Muggs.
Good evening, council, mayor.
Good evening.
Uh, the board met May the seventh, uh, we've been assisting the street department with the repairs on the cupboard on Tate Road. And, uh, also the board affords a favorable recommendation in passing a T.A.C. contract resolution that we have to. That's the, uh, T.A.C. is our marketer for our gas, it's a twenty-year program. Got option to go back there before, negotiate if we want to. Uh, we also had a bid from Grinder and Grinder for the water plant chemical room rehab. We need y'all to vote on which is part of the, the A.R.P.A. grant that we received in twenty-one, I believe. And, uh, gas prices were sixty-seven cents for the month of May. That concludes my report.
Famous enough, next to price.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ms. Pratt.
Oh, my report, uh, total fire calls had seventy-seven, uh, total calls had, um, seventy in the city, I had to look at that, was seven in the city and seven in the county. Um, training hour was one ninety-seven, smoke alarm installed was fourteen, fire code inspection twenty-two, purification one. Uh, just want you guys to know that ours, ladder truck is down, is out of service in, in the shop in Memphis. Uh, just got the okay today to go ahead and get it fixed. The price on that is gonna be a little bit, little bit over thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, it said, uh, in Memphis, Sid Martin. Uh, we also have, we got Somerville, Jackson, Selmer, Madison County, and on standby in case we need a ladder truck in the city of Bolivar. So, we do have, if we need a ladder truck, we get them guys on standby. They all know that, we'd be calling them if we need a ladder truck. That is my report.
What's wrong with it?
Uh, ooh, it's a lot's wrong with it, uh, we got, we got three, we got, let me see. Three hydraulic cylinder repair, need to be repaired through the cylinders, it got four. We repaired one in twenty, one were bad in twenty-twenty-three, we repaired one in twenty-twenty-four. Last time the ladder truck would ta- tested, we got three bad this time. And we also got, need, uh, front end alignment and some lights need to be fixed on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
What year is that?
Two thousand seven.
Two thousand, that's when we added it, in two thousand seven?
Yes, sir.
That's when we got it.
What is the life of one of those trucks?
Life only five, ladder, ready, they said, uh, ten, went from ten to twenty years. Ladder truck is twenty years, it's eighteen years, I don't think it's eighteen now, eighteen years old now.
Do you have the thirteen thousand in your budget to pay for it?
Do I have the thirteen thousand? No, ma'am.
So, is that something we, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it would be a budget amendment.
Yes. Anything else?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, police assistant chief Henson, uh, Mr. Jones is off this week.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Uh, last month, both police department answered five-hundred-and-seventy calls for service, issued a hundred-and-seventy-one citations. Uh, had seventeen total accidents, all of them without injury. Uh, had fifty-six total arrests, forty-two adult, fourteen juveniles. Uh, the Safe Streets Task Force saturation conducted twelve patrols during the month. And we had two and forty-seven hours of training.
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, chief.
Yes, sir.
Are y'all pretty well back up to par for us, uh, manpower?
Uh, we got one that's kinda in limbo right now. We're, we're seeing if he can, if he's gonna be able to, you know, meet the standards that we require. And other than that, we are, we're.
The first time in a while.
First time in a long time.
Now, how many do you know him that runs on weekend?
How many officers on a weekend? I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, um, I'd have to look at the roll call. Course it changes, you know, with weekend to weekend with days off and, I mean, holidays, sick days, normal days. I can get you that known.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Well, I was just on, up there, I know Ms. Miller asked about the break-ins. I talked to investigators earlier, they do have a suspect, they had no rest of me, they've.
Should see some type of action on that, hopefully in the next few days.
Okay, thank you.
Was it correct that they were out of town, out of Madison County?
Uh, their home, I'm not sure.
Where they were from?
Uh, uh, re- I'm not sure where they're originally from.
Since we almost took capacity on the officers, how many officers are you talking about we have? Twenty-something?
Twenty-four, I believe, is full strength.
Twenty-five we're supposed to have, or twenty-four?
I'd, I'd, I'd have to double check my figures on that.
I'm sorry?
I'd have to double check my figures on that. We had one officer that we had received through a grant from the federal government, that grant expired. Course we kept the officer. But, uh, with this officer in limbo, uh, I, I, but I believe our full capacity is twenty-four, maybe twenty-five.
And usually the, uh, federal grant, once we run out, that's when the city picks it.
Exactly. Federal grant runs for three years and after that.
Yeah, and the city picks it.
Right.
Right, okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief.
Next, Parks and Law, uh, Mr. Ford.
Parks and Law Grayson report on the following. Our youth summer golf league, the registration ended today. And we plan to start first Wednesday of June. Lifeguards, uh, we had one to sign up this past weekend for the University of Memphis certification class and she passed it. And our plans are to open on June the third. Uh, we're having some issues with the filtration cycle system at the pool. Uh, the pump's not priming, so I'm optimistic and we're gonna keep working on it. And lastly, uh, we feel some washouts, uh, on the trail that Pleasant Creek Run and we'll continue to work on those. And that's my report. Thank you.
How many, how many lifeguards do we have then? I see one signed up, got certi- certification. How many do we have?
We have two that's still certified from the last year, uh, which a total of three. We typically wanna at least have four that are scheduled, yeah.
So, you're looking for at least one more, if possible?
If possible.
But if not, three of them?
If not, yeah, we, we can run, we just switch them out, right?
You gonna volunteer to do one? I can. I can swim, I put it like that.
Passing that certification class is a whole other.
Yeah, that'd be a problem.
Is there any grants or anything that's coming up, maybe we, we can apply for, for the Ple- Pleasant Run Park Trail to pave it? That you know of?
That's what we did in our team, our, our rails, the trail, that last thing we did last month, that's what they, uh, did.
And that, that, that's the pave all the trails all around?
Well, that's for sand beach, and the other is that, just the exterior of the Pleasant Run. I don't know if we gonna get it or not, and we get all the funding.
And what about out there, uh, City Park? Is that trail?
Uh, that's, we gonna do some, uh.
City sixty-four all the way back?
We gonna do some concrete work out there on that.
Okay, that's what I thought you were saying, last time, last month.
That is, a few of the sidewalks that's washed out.
So, the city's gonna do that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, take some sanitation, columns here at Tate Road, make it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, member of the council.
You got real good there.
Oh, man, it's been rough. Uh, my report is as follows, we have had three-hundred-and-ten-point-eight-zero tons of commercial. Had a hundred-and-sixty-five-point-eleven tons residential, total of, uh, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-point-nine-one tons of trash. We still doing our leafing, well, our, our brush and limb pickup. Uh, we doing a lot of mowing and weed eating around town. We still got crews available to do that. We, our bulk pickup ended last month. And we finished up a couple of weeks this first part of this month. And, uh, we still working on Tate Road. We're, we're getting closer and closer, if, if the good Lord would give us dry weather, we would make a lot more progress. But we're coming up with it.
Do you have a date in mind, 'cause I can't go anywhere without somebody stopping me and asking?
I, I wish I did, I mean, if I could, you know, if I had a forecast of the weather, I mean, and, you know, knew for sure, then I could give you some kind of a date. But if we could get good work and we could have it within two weeks.
Okay.
If we could get good weather, I'm talking good weather. Uh, that's, that's our.
Take your time, do it, do it right, that way we.
Well, we, we, you know.
We're not here and.
We were working on it and, you know, we hit a little bit of a problem when we have some wet dirt. So, we had to back up and redo on the dirt. But other than that, it's still coming along pretty well.
We appreciate you guys, we know it's, yeah.
I appreciate everybody handing, standing behind me, I appreciate, uh, the water department. They're, they're really, I mean, Tim and Jim, they really have me, people there when I need them. And, and equipment when I needed it, I mean, they really, really helped me. So, uh, Casey Swift even stepped in and helped us with a loan of a tractor, so. I mean, we, we've got help, I mean, and it's just, we got, we got a road ahead of us, I mean.
Is it planned to re, repave that section as soon as we get it done?
Well, it's probably gonna be a while, we're gonna have to let it settle because, you know, it takes time for the, the dirt and then the rock and everything to settle, so you don't wanna run in there and pave it as soon as you get done with it. Because then you're gonna lose the pavement that you just put in it. So, that, that's the issue with that, we're just gonna have to maintain it and watch it until it quits settling to a certain extent. And then we could come in and, and put some kind of pavement asphalt on top.
Thank you.
I was, I was, I mean, we met with, uh, engineers on Friday to, uh, assess the damage on Polk Street. It's still open, but the, the box covered on that, the retaining wall, if you're going towards the park, that collapsed during the storm too, so. But that job is a lot bigger than what our guys can handle well.
Yes.
Casey actually brought one of the track holes down there Friday and.
Friday and cleaned the trees, uh, he got us down there too, right.
But once they get the plans, they, we'll have to get them drawn up by engineer and we'll bid that out, uh, as an emergency repair. We're still working with this group from FEMA trying to make sure we can get the reimbursement up on both of these.
Both of them, hopefully, yes.
One question, when would the crew start paving? When would they gonna start coming in and paving the streets?
Um, I haven't spoke to, uh, Mr. Fowler yet, I, I'm not sure. Uh, usually around the first part of June, end of, end of May, first part of June, somewhere in that area.
Okay.
Um, is, is when I'm hearing, I mean, you know, that's normal.
June, I was gonna say, have to have it done by June third, but he usually calls about a week out, he's usually the first part.
Right, right, yeah, he, he's usually, I mean, he's usually right on it, so once they get on it, it'll be done pretty quick.
Okay, okay.
Do you, do you have the list of the streets?
I, I do.
Cause I've been given a copy of it.
Well, uh, I have a preliminary list of what me and Mr. Mayor had talked about.
Well, you can give them later on, if you want, they'll, you know, later on in the meeting.
What we gonna do, a little bit on Naylor Road.
Okay.
From bus garage up to the apartments, there's this pretty bad intersection right there. Margin Street from Fairgrounds to the church, right there in front of the apartments, it's, it's knawed up pretty good there also. Uh, Locust Drive from the dead end, from the end up to, past the first driveway to the left. It's, it's just, it's falling apart and their aprons are gone. It's been a while since we've been over there in that area. Uh, Neely Street, uh, Neely Street, uh, between Madison and Jones. It's, it's pretty bad through that little stretch and, and it was requested that that be done also. Uh, Lucy Black, we're gonna try to cover those trenches that were cut in the road. And the intersection of Blossom and Peach, we're gonna try to patch that and fix that up. Uh, McNeil Street, right around the driveway to the cemetery is going down the hill. We discussed that, we're gonna try to get that cleaned up and patched back up, 'cause there's a little hump there, but.
Are we done down, down through there with the sewer and all that? I know that the, that the hoed up spin, the sewer pipes or some.
Well, I believe so, I mean, I, I'm not sure, uh.
Usually that stuff don't break until you get through the pavement then.
Right, right.
Then Jim will come to cut, cut it all up.
Once we get the new pavement down is usually when it breaks. That's why we've run into everywhere we go, so, yes.
So, is this paved in for, for the last budget or the upcoming budget?
That's the, this year's budget, this past, well, it'd be for the last year's budget for up till June.
The budget we're in at?
Up to June the thirtieth, yes.
The merger of problems would be to add, uh, down Sycamore right up, uh, from Water Street, some kind of a big, big hole that's there on, almost on that corner. Most of the time when vehicles come in, some, they tried to dodge that, that where that hole at, some of them turning in off of water on, you know, uh, on Sycamore and it almost hit head on. Because it's kinda close up there on that corner and it need to be paved.
I think you're talking about where it's been cut, I don't know.
I, I, I would say, I believe it's a cut place there.
Some of the, like, some of these spots you see where it's been cut, they don't go and pave it until they, it's settled completely.
Right, we gotta wait.
Like, Jim, a lot of custom utility department, like, they'll come back a year or so and do all of that separate from what we do with this. I don't know, I think that's what you're talking about, though. If you see any of the ones, it's like just a square cut or rectangle cut, that's what that is and it has to settle before you, about like he's just talking about on that.
Right.
Okay, 'cause what this one is doing is that, it's started getting bigger and bigger. Uh, it's been that way for a while, so.
That's probably what he's talking about, is it settled?
Do you need speed bumps?
Uh, I had some requests for speed bumps, I don't know the.
Well, you, you, once they get here, we see how much left on them.
We gonna have to see how much is left.
I know we talked about on Fairline, so.
Yeah, Fairline is on the list, if there's enough leftover. That's, that's Fairline, and somebody said something about Mecklenburg, but it's something about Mecklenburg, we can't, we're not supposed to do that or something, I don't, I don't remember, it's some kinda, uh, it's kind of a touchy situation on that, I think.
Yeah, 'cause it goes into the county.
Right, I think that's what it is.
Yeah.
Actually.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Library Miss Becky, she's back as our, uh, director, library director, so she, uh, when she left the first time with some family issues and came back and we happy to have her, have her back, so.
Thank you, mayor, good evening, city council. Uh, this is my report for April, we took in nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents from donations, copies, and fines. We had a small number of programs in April because we were short-staffed, uh, and please continue to remember Julia Bobbitt in your prayers, she's doing chemo for her cancer right now. But we had four programs with twenty in attendance, we had two passive programs with eighty-five users. We had an estimated patronage count of four-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Uh, we had thirteen bookings for our meeting rooms with twenty-four guests. Our total circulated items for the month was one-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten. We had two-hundred-and-eighty-eight computer users, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy Wi-Fi users, four-hundred-and-ninety-three reads users, twelve history ring visits, two microfilm usages. And our interlibrary loan system, we borrowed twenty-two and loaned out ten. That's my report.
Miss, Miss Becky, can you tell the board who you hired for the assistant director position recently?
Yes, uh, we brought back Hannah Thompson as the assistant director, program coordinator. And she already has some really awesome programs lined up for summer readings, so bring your kids and have fun.
Thank you, Miss Becky.
Next, compliance, Mr. Watkins.
Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, should have a copy of my report, uh, building consultations, ten. Uh, building permits written for, building inspections, two, courtesy notice is issued, twenty-five. Uh, share with you that Walmart is going through a massive remodel, that's what they call it, but it's all inside for the most part. They're gonna do some painting and some signs outside, but everything else is inside. But they're getting everything set up, about ready to start that. And, uh, Murphy Oil's gonna be building a new building there, should be starting sometime in the near future. And then we got our hospital coming up as well, well, pretty quick, I hope. So, we've been trying to get details worked out with all that.
Are you the one that handles, uh, who handles yard management?
That would be me. Uh, we got a lot of it. The rain is terrible, I mean, it's, it's just really a lot of it going on because of the rain, but still, we got a lot. I probably got twenty-five letters I need to get sent out right now, so, um, we're working on them. And, uh, we got some, and Mr. Williams, I didn't call you back about that house out there, I did find the owner. And, um, they're supposed to get it mowed, but if they don't, we're gonna get it mowed next time the tractors are out there, so.
Really appreciate it. What, what about the property with all the cars, I know it's been a whole lot of rain lately and.
We still have not been over there. I mean, every time it dries up a little bit, it's just, you know.
It's crazy to me, some of these properties just.
Yeah.
Looks terrible, uh, Heinz Boulevard is terrible. And, you know, and I know it's kinda hard because a lot of those are rental properties, do you find the renter, do you find the owner? But it's terrible.
I send, I send the letters to the owner.
There's, there's garbage cans in the middle of the road, there's basketball goals everywhere. And it, it, it literally looks terrible.
You know, we, uh.
I get more complaints about that one road than any other road in my district.
Was it two years ago, mayor, that we did the letter and gave one to everybody on Heinz Boulevard to taking trash can back to the building? And they did for once or twice and then they leave them out there, so.
Just furniture, there's end tables, coffee tables, we really appreciate Mr. Mayfield and him came through and cleaned it, I think, twice, two, three times. And by the time you get it up, it's time to go back through again, it's, it's terrible.
You know, used to, we just did the, uh, the big cleanup twice a year. We did April and, was it April and August, I think, or April and October, maybe? Uh, now we're doing, what, four times a year, I think, so, you know, so I appreciate them doing that.
Well, I can only imagine what it would be like if we didn't do it more, so.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate you guys, really.
Absolutely.
Thank y'all.
And, and I might share with you too, I've done a lot of, uh, had to a lot of assessments with Grand Junction and Selmer after the storm went through. We've done quite a bit to try to help them with that as well, so I've had a lot of time tied up there as well, but. We're gonna get back on it and try to get it cleaned up, looking good again, that's what we're shooting for.
Y'all did a great job, we appreciate you, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Watkins.
Yes, sir.
The street that, uh, Limp, uh, chief lives on, Limp Price, that Neely, uh, Neely Street?
Fisher.
Fisher Street and Jones right there at the corner, I know we cut the grass, so I think it's about time to cut it again.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
I do.
That empty house.
Yeah, and they built an addition.
I think that what we use to cut, don't we?
Started an addition and then they, they walked away, I don't know what they did.
Okay.
Um.
Cause we put it on a property tax or something.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So, it look like it's about time to.
Yeah.
Kinda give it a trim now.
Right, if they, if they don't get it, we'll get it with the tractors and vans, like we did before.
All right.
Trying to keep up.
Thank you there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Uh, so, as my community is developed, Mr. Hill.
Good evening, council, uh, you have my report there. Uh, as mentioned earlier, I am participating with the Hardeman County Coalition on Youth Mental Health with Tennessee Voices. Um, they do have an activity coming up for youth, this, this coalition, uh, teaming up with Tennessee Voices is gonna bring some activities throughout the summer, uh, for youth that draws attention to their mental health. And they're, they're gonna host the first one at the Timbers Building, so we're, we're happy to be able to host that for them. And that is May twenty-second. Um, I was able to represent Mayor McTisick welcoming the Arkansas Land and Community Development Corporation uh, for their in, community engagement summit, summit here at City. Uh, for their in, community engagement summit, summit here at City Hall in the conference room. Uh, we took our first trip, uh, with the senior adults, the timeless treasures to the Parrish Fish Fry. And, uh, since then, we've done, uh, our second trip and are already signing up for, um, the next ones that are coming up. I am planning a couple for the summer that will just be based here in Bolivar, maybe even at City Hall or at the Timbers. Um, instead of traveling, just because of heat, I don't wanna, uh, get too far away with our, with our seniors. But as it cools back down, we have two more trips planned for the fall that we're, uh, already signing up for. Uh, I attended the county, uh, branding unveiling as well, and so you should be seeing some stuff, uh, coming out of that. Uh, in the realm especially of marketing and tourism, uh, for the county and for each individual city. And I just wanted to draw your attention to, uh, some of the guests that are with us tonight. Uh, our seven U B Town, uh, travel baseball team are here with us tonight just out of support for, uh, the, the information you're gonna get tonight. In the Sports Plex and the YMCA, and so we thank them for being here and just another show of support for the great potential that that project has.
I'm gonna see this, have they had the Parrish Fish Fry?
Yes, yes, sir.
Oh, they have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was, since I was a senior, I thought maybe I could go.
We did it last month, but we'll go again next year, you can catch it.
Mr. Hill, so, just something I've been thinking about, so, I know since COVID, we kinda brought, you know, kinda took, uh, the senior. Senior program stuff back a little bit, just obviously because of Co- COVID and stuff, but since, uh, we're kinda past that now. Do you think that there's some opportunity for maybe one day every couple of weeks, maybe we, we could coordinate something for the seniors? Maybe at the Timbers, like the conference room or something, just give them some space and some room. Where there's bingo games or whatever it may be, not everyone wants to travel, you know, to Parrish or they're not able to for medical reasons or whatever. You think there's some opportunity there that we could do something, maybe twice a month or just, just something?
Yeah, we're not, we're not setting a time schedule at this point, like I said, this summer, we're gonna do some things that's just here at City Hall, just to stay out of the heat. Uh, this is just our introduction back into senior, uh, group outings, I'm, you know, I'm not a senior citizen coordinator or director. But, uh, I, I am doing that, uh, as just being part of the team with, with Mayor McTisick. Us not having one, you know, me tying myself down to certain days of the week is a little more difficult, uh, with where I need to be and what I need to be doing. So that's why we're doing it this way for now, and hopefully as it grows, we will see an, uh, a need and, and open, do something different.
So, Becky can come up and tell us, they, what you're talking about, they do at the library now, uh.
There's a lot of.
Tell us about the Sasa seniors and bingo, they did those programs and.
Uh, yes, there, we have a craft day for the adults, they come in and paint, uh, they've made candles, they've done jewelry. Uh, we have bingo every month, we're trying to do it two times a month during the summer. Uh, we have a movie day, um, so we have several things for our seniors, it, like you said, COVID, it dwindled a little bit with that. But, uh, we've been getting a few coming back in, we run about eight in general, we have a book club. So we're hoping to grow that, but we do offer some programs for the senior citizens at the library, thank you, Mayor.
All right, I've, uh, well, my report, I left off budget meeting, uh, that's Ms. Ray, Mr. McKenna, Mr. Golden, and Mr. Brown. Uh, can y'all meet in all the council, of course, welcome, but that's the budget committee, on the twenty-seventh at five-thirty? That's Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, that's Tuesday, at five-thirty.
What's the date again?
The twenty-seventh.
Okay, May the twenty-seventh.
Care bad, uh, so the historical zoning committee did meet, and we met with our representative from the state of Tennessee.
Oh, that thought.
I'm just saying, I see me on here.
Wait a minute, are we good for that date? At five-thirty, yeah, okay, go ahead, take off, I just wanted to make sure I was good with that meeting, now you, you can have.
No, I can go, okay, no, um, yeah, and so we will be hap, we, we are gonna be scheduling a training. Uh, that's gonna be for the council, for the commission and any other people that in the public maybe that are interested. And we don't know when we're gonna schedule that, do we? Did we figure out a time? But we had a, we had a very good meeting with him, and he actually went on a little tour to look at some of the buildings here in Bolivar. That we are planning to try to annex into our, um, historical zone. So, I'm looking forward to making some of that happen, particularly down on the east end.
Thank you, Mayor, um, our old business, second reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero four. Ordinance amendment official zoning map, Bolivar, property located at five fifty Build On Road from B one to H one. This is the second reading on the land for the hospital, uh, so we will have to have a public hearing. Is there a motion to, we, um, we from executive, executive session in the public hearing?
Sound move.
Motion by Mr. McKenna, is there a second, second by Mr. Williams, uh, if you would, cast your votes. Oh, I'm sorry, that one for me wasn't. Motion here, we are now in the public hearing section of ordinance, uh, twenty-five zero zero four. Is there anyone that would like to address the council regarding that ordinance? All right, if I have their motion that we can reconvene into executive session.
So, second.
Motion by Mr. Woots, uh, second by Mr. McKenna, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion here, all right, we're back on the, uh, reading of ordinance twenty-five zero zero four. This is just re-zoning that property of five fifty Build On Road from B one to H one. Any questions on that?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Lau, if you would, cast your votes. Motion here, just wanna let y'all know, we, after a whole bunch of emails, right, Kevin, we finally got the land closed and everything. Settle on the title work and the contract with the hospital, so they're closing on that and they're supposed to have a site plan for planning commission on Tuesday. Um, so, everything's moving forward on that and hopefully it'll be breaking, once the site plan is approved, they'll be breaking ground, I think, on the hospital, so. All right, move on to new business, resolution twenty, twenty-five zero zero eight, a resolution authorizing the purchase of natural gas. From Tennessee Energy Acquisition Corporation, also known as TA, uh, that's what Jim was speaking of earlier. We buy back gas in bulk, and I'll say this has probably been a huge cost savings for the city doing this, so. Uh, we just wanna renew that cha- contract, the utility board has, uh, sent a positive recommendation fit. Motion by Ms. Ray, second by Mr. Golda.
Setting the budget, in their budget, how much is it, fifty-two?
It's a contract, babe.
Oh, contract, but I knew he said something about some money.
That's on the ARPA thing.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you.
All right, uh, motion by Ms. Ray, second by Mr. Golda, if you would, cast your votes. Motion here, um, now we have the approval of bid for the water, uh, plant chemical room rehab. This is, um, ARPA money, grant we got in the low bid from Grinder Table Grinder. Uh, Memphis was fifty-two thousand, five, ten, oh, six, and we've done a lot of work with them there, but, uh. Utility board has also made a positive recommendation on that.
Make the motion we approve it.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Lau.
And this, the grant is, what is the grant, how much is the grant, fifty-two?
Five, ten, oh, six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Low bid.
Low bid, that's what I want. Oh, great wood, but it is a great.
Motion here, next is the approval of plans of service and annexation of Sand Beach Lake and Pleasant Run Park. Uh, basically what this is, the, on that parcel of land that we bought on the lake, the back part, so half the lake is technically not in the city limits. And then on Pleasant Run Park, the state that gave us that land is still technically county, it's state land there. And we wanna just annex that, we started and never finished that product, pro- process of annexing that land, so. Where you see ser- plan of services there, there won't be utilities or anything out there, cause like I said, that is just that back parcel of the lake. And then the other, uh, parcel of the, of Pleasant Run Park, that's just the trail area out there. So we're just basically making it all corporate limits and cleaning up our, um, city corporate limit map. Any questions on that? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Ms. Ray, second by Mr. Golda, if you would, cast your vote.
It says Pleasant Run Park two, do you know what that part is?
What park?
Yeah, Pleasant Run Park.
Pleasant, uh, toward the, out there by the country club, right behind you, huh?
Yeah.
What part, you said what park is or what part?
No, which part out there?
Are you saying park with a K or part, part?
What part?
Which part?
Okay, I don't understand what you're saying. The back section where those far back trails are, you know where the, where it hits the man form on that back side there.
Yeah, it's kinda weird, cause the, city, county, city, okay, I got you.
I'm s- I'm sorry, I, I didn't know if you were saying park or part. All right, motion here, next is approval of funding for Southwest Development District, uh, Economic Development Team. What they, we have, uh, Southwest Development District, what Joe Barker put together a group called STEPS, Southwest Tennessee Economic Partnership. Where all the counties and, uh, western, southwest Tennessee would pay fifteen thousand to help market and recruit industry to southwest Tennessee. Uh, the county had paid half of that, and I'm asking that we would approve the other half of that, uh, amount, which be seventy-five hundred. Wyville said they was gonna put some in, I don't, she hasn't given me an amount, but I'm asking for the approval up to seventy-five hundred. Uh, the, the event that I was in DC last week was with the economic partnership. We had some real good conversations with people that's looking to make, industries are looking to make investments in Tennessee, so. We're marketing Southwest as a region opposed to just Bolivar or Hard- Hayward, Hardeman, McNair, we're just marketing the whole region, so. That's what I'm asking for the approval to up to seventy-five hundred, like I said, the county paid half, and I'm just asking you guys. Would, it'll be a budget amendment that we will pay that other half, uh, that Wyville won't pay and we'll pay the difference of.
Well, they definitely do a lot for Bolivar and southwest Tennessee, so.
What is, what is, uh, Hardeman County Chamber Commerce doing? That we paying, what's the difference in that?
This Southwest and. Well, the chamber is, uh, the chamber is just Hardeman County Chamber, they just work big stuff for the county. Southwest Development District is doing the development for every, all the eight counties in the southwest region. So they're two different entities, yeah, uh, I mean, they work together, but they do two completely different things, so. Southwest does our grants, they have the HRA side, uh, where they do the, the food programs. Economic Development does our planning, uh, senior services in Southwest does a whole lot of stuff.
Well, what have Hardeman County Chamber Commerce, what have they done?
Or go, in regards to what?
Just what have they done?
Oh, well, I, I speak to the chamber regarding the.
Well, how much we paying them?
Uh, I think we paid ten thousand.
Come tell us something.
They paid ten, we paid ten thousand to the chamber, I think.
I don't know what they gonna pay ten.
This is completely.
I know it's totally different, but I'm just, since we's on this subject, I'm just curious. What do Hardeman County Chamber Commerce do for the city of Bolivar for ten thousand dollars? That's all I need to know.
I'll give you a little bit, cause I'm on the board, uh.
Well, I better look, need to be looking at you there.
Absolutely, so the Chamber Commerce is, uh, is really awesome, they got a great, uh, director over there, Vicky. Uh, she coordinates with all local businesses, not just in Bolivar, but throughout the county, I think we got probably three hundred memberships. And with that, she coordinates between all of those for marketing, for, um, commercials, shouting out the businesses. She coordinates one business with another business, if we can provide support services, say to Th- uh, Dover, Thyssen Crump and Middleton. There may be another business in Bolivar that could provide services, she coordinates all that. She writes grants, um, there's a lot of, um, economic proj- economic development projects that they try to piece together between Joe Barker, us, and the city and the county. Uh, she coordinates with the mayor's office a lot, uh, the board is, the board is awesome, uh, and they do a lot, um, lot for the county.
So, you're speaking for yourself?
Yeah, I'm speaking for myself.
Okay, okay, what about the other boards?
I think they all do a good job.
Oh, okay, they awesome too, I thought you were just talking about yourself.
No, everyone, I think the whole board is awesome, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
All right, we got a, um, any other questions on the Southwest Economic Partnership? All right, um, motion by Ms. Ray, second by Ms. Miller, if you would, cast your vote. Motion here, uh, next out of approval of BEA Board appointment for Mr. Ernest Jones to the, about a five-year term. Uh, BEA has recommended him to serve.
I make that motion.
Second, motion by Mr. Lau, second by Mr. Golden, if you would, cast your vote. Motion here, uh, now I need the approval for opening a new bank account for the LPRF retainage fee. Uh, basically what this is, the reimbursement that we get from the grant, they require us to put it in a separate account and pay it out of that, so. We, the next local bank on the list was Sim- is it Simmons, right, uh, opening up a, a checking account at Simmons Bank for those funds.
And that's money from what?
El- uh, local parcel rate fund.
Giving it back to the city.
Oh, giving it back to the.
No, no, they, they giving it back to the city, this money, what you said.
Yeah.
Ayo, ayo, you said ayo.
Local parcel rate, the, the, money of funding that we get from the state for the.
From the state, right.
It will go into this account.
Yeah, right, okay, I'll make that motion then.
All right, I have a motion. Second by Mr. Brown, if you would, cast your vote. All right, motion here, now we'll move to Mr. John Weaver of Cumberland Securities, uh, John's been from Knoxville. And come down to talk to us about funding, uh, as he come, I'll just tell you guys about the, we, where we are before. He'll, he's gonna go way more in depth with numbers and stuff, but basically, um, what he is gonna present is our financial status. And standing from where we are and what it looks like for us funded, and if we were to decide to move forward on the Sports Plex and YMCA. As well as the building, so he has a lot of different options that we're gonna get done, so, uh. He's a financial bureau and been working with, uh, our county, the co- common security has worked with a lot of entities across the state and. Been knowing John well and excited to work with him, and you gotta know him, uh. Hey, y'all the one voting, so, all right, go ahead, Mr. John.
Yeah, you should have a copy up there yourself, uh, Mayor, uh, my name is John Warner, I am with Cumberland Securities. We're a firm that has been, uh, established in the state of Tennessee for about a hundred years. We've worked with local governments across the state, cities, counties, special school districts, utility districts, helping them, uh, achieve some of the, uh. Capital projects that they've been wanting to accomplish, and then once they have that debt on the books, helping them manage that debt, uh, a- a- in the most cost efficient manner. Uh, I did a couple of things, Mayor, I think the first thing we needed to do is I thought it would be, uh, appropriate for the council at this time to see. What is the debt look like for the city? And I have put together this summary of debt, which I've just handed out, and just to give you a very quick, uh, overview. I've broken this up into each of the individual funds where the, uh, payments are coming from to support that particular debt. And if you go to the table of contents, it, it breaks it down quite simply, the general fund, which is your general government, uh, dollars. Water and Sewer Fund, sanitation, sanitation again, and all sources. Put together, and the one I wanna focus on is really the general fund at this point. And if you look at the general fund, uh, you, you currently have, and if you'll go to, uh, we'll go ahead and just go to the summary and just cut, cut to the chase. You go to page fifteen. I'm sorry, page fourteen, the city right now has just a little bit over two million dollars in debt. And it's payable, uh, you know, through the neck, through the fiscal year twenty fifty-one. And if you turn to page fifteen, you can see what that cash flow looks like coming out of the general fund budget. To support that debt. Now, it's important that you know this, because the next thing I wanna talk about is this particular project that's been presented to the city. And how you're going to be able to address funding this. So, and we're, so this is, this is the, the frame in which we address all of our debt issues with our clients. What they have currently, what resources do they have in place, and how can we implement the resources they have in place right now to address the future debt needs? Okay, and this, this, this particular project, so on this one, this is the preliminary funding analysis. For this, for the park that's gonna be in partnership with the YMCA. After talking extensively with the mayor over the last. After talking extensively with the mayor over the last several weeks, if you look at the total project itself at twenty-one million dollars, that's a little bit more than what I would suggest the city is able to handle at this time, given the resources that you have in place. But if you wisely break it up in phases, you can move the needle forward with getting something that's going to make, you know, something that you can build upon. Okay, yes, it's nice to be able to have all at one time, but so does every kid at Christmas, okay? So with this four million dollars, I think you start with a very strong foundation to be able to purchase the property, purchase the gym, and also have some funds to be able to start making some necessary improvements to the gym at the time that you make the purchase, so that it's as highly functional as possible without being too costly, spent, too costly to the city. And I suggest this is, is I remember when I first bought my first house, it was in a move-in condition. I didn't have to pay anything, right, when I moved in, I wasn't in it but a month, and I started to have to replace the roof, replace some of the plumbing pretty soon after that, and it was something, you know, if I had done, if I had thought about on the front end, and had the amount of money I needed to have on the front end, I would have probably borrowed the money to get, you know, to get it in good operating order, instead of always trying to play catch-up all the time. So that's, that's my thought process, okay? Um, the second thing is, is that we're, you know, we'll be working with USDA Rural Development, which is a, an incredibly helpful lender of, 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 for projects in, um, rural communities across the state of Tennessee. We work a lot of projects with them, and they are, they're excellent partners. Our role, in addition to helping with some of the preliminary feasibility studies and that sort of thing, we would also help work with the city on the interim financing piece of this, and here's the reason why we would do that. You get with USDA a forty-year amortization schedule, forty years to pay off the debt at a fixed rate. We want to try to preserve as much of that forty years as we possibly can. So in the front, on the front end, when you go do the project, and, and USDA already has the project in place, or it's gonna be approved, we would, we would enter into an agreement with a local bank after doing an RFP, with a, with a bank that would give us the lowest cost of funding, and you would borrow the money in sections from the bank as you need it to finish up the project. Now, because we're not talking about an awful lot of construction, most of this money could probably be done in twelve to eighteen months, would you think, mayor? Something along those lines, if not even sooner. But the key thing here is that you would actually only be paying interest on the money that you're borrowing as you borrow it, not principal. And then once the project is complete, and you get the certificate of occupancy, then you simply have Rural Development come in behind it, take out the project, and then they, and then you start the forty-year amortization with the, uh, current, uh, uh, rate that they were talking about, which right now is two point four five percent for a forty-year amortization period. I would suggest, at this time, as your municipal advisor, that you consider paying it on a monthly basis, principal and interest, and then when you do so, then you're, you're always knocking down principal every single month, thus reducing your overall interest expense over the life of the loan, as opposed to doing something else more conventional where it might be just interest only, uh, on one payment, principal and interest on another, like you would see on a typical bank loan. Again, this is something I think is the smartest move, and if you have additional monies along the way, you can, uh, pay, you can pay down this debt in advance by putting more money towards the principal, which would be applied on the end of the loan, thus reducing your current interest liability. So again, another win-win if you have extra money in the coffers, okay? Now, if you were to look at on page one of the preliminary funding analysis, there's the graph we just got through talking about in the summary of debt. On page two, and this is a model, okay, and we can tweak the model all that we would like to. The important thing is it kind of gives you a concept of how the money can flow for this particular project. And as I'm fond of saying also, all models are wrong, some models are useful. So this is why I want you to do is just get the concept of how we're gonna be spending our money to do this, okay? You can see on page one at the very top, interest only, and that's just to borrow the money in phases, and I, and I, and I just put in there quarterly, one million dollars every quarter. And then at that period, and then after you end of that, after twenty-four months, then you start making principal, uh, principal and interest payments of roughly two hundred eight thousand, two hundred nine thousand dollars a year. That's what those monthly payments would come out to be cumulatively, okay? Now, if you go to your next page, page three, this project is actually, you're paying less in principal and interest payments than what you're currently paying for all of your current debt right now. But there's only one problem, you still have to pay, you still have to service your current debt. So if you look at it, if you look on page four, that's what the debt service looks like if you were to pay all of, when you, when you have to service all of your debt after you've, after you've purchased the, you know, four million dollars for the multipurpose sports park project. And then if you go to page five, that yellow dotted line at the top represents your current revenues that you're spending. The debt exceeds the first three or four years. So what do you do? Well, after looking at your, uh, audits for the last five years, it might behoove this body to consider some revenue enhancements. But you don't necessarily, and you just need to do that just for the overall health of your budget, just to maintain the operations and the services that your citizens may be liking to see you continue. That's just something to consider. I'm not, I'm not a proponent for any one particular project, I'm just your municipal advisor, I play with a computer all day long. But this particular project, if it is the will of this council to move this project forward, you might want to use the cash fund balance that you have to pay for the excess for the first four years. And roughly speaking, we're talking maybe somewhere around fifty thousand dollars the first two years, a hundred thousand dollars the third year, and another fifty thousand dollars the fourth year. And that tends to track along these first four years where the bar exceeds the yellow, the yellow dotted line, okay? Then, after you have serviced the current debt after four years, it drops down below, so you can use your current revenues and still be in good shape. We talked about earlier about economic development, and all the things that the mayor is doing and what the chamber is or isn't doing.
True.
I'll leave that for the political side, okay? But the important thing is this, when someone comes into a community, and I, and I was a finance director for Knox County, there's a lot that goes into a feasibility study for a corporation to move its operations anywhere. And I want to tell you right now, Bolivar is one of my favorite towns that I visit in the state of Tennessee. It is lovely, and you all run a very efficient, by looking at your financials, operation. But it might behoove the council to consider doing something to move the needle a little bit more, and move that, and, and move it forward, because when someone comes in, remember, these people are probably coming from very large areas with, you know, fantastic schools, and fantastic recreation, and fantastic this, and fantastic that, and they'll come into Bolivar and they'll think this place is lovely, but what else? And you can't get there by doing just grants alone. Now, that's my, that's my raw speech right now, okay? But it's something that you, did I mess up?
Fire, gotta call, you're good.
Okay.
All right, as long as, as long as they don't say two eleven North Washington Street, we all right.
Okay, we're cool then, okay, good.
Keep going.
So, but that, you know, but that's, that, but that's, that's the thing that, you know, that, you know, Bolivar might want to consider, that this is not a decision in a vacuum, but this is actually a decision that you may be taking for the, you know, for the near future of Bolivar, and subsequent projects like this going forward. Yeah, you could absolutely be, you could just continue to do exactly what you're doing right now, and no one's gonna criticize you for it. Because what you've got is a good thing here. But if it's the will of this council to move the community forward and do new and different things, these are some of the things you have to consider. Fortunately, you have the resources in place because you've done the right thing up to this point to at least starting the launching pad. Start from the launching pad, taking advantage of this. But you do have some other things I think you should consider, and as your municipal advisor, that's what I do. Okay? Now that I've gone through that epiphany, are there any questions of me?
What do you have negatives to say about, you know, usually positive and negative of anything, any building or whatever? What, what, what's the negative part we might run into? I'd like to hear that.
The negative.
If any, you know?
Well, yes, of course, you know, you run out of money. Then you have to make it, then you, you know, if everything remains the same, then you have to make a decision, do I, do I, do I reduce services to service the debt? Or do I not service the debt? Now, I can assure you, there's some people in Nashville that will not allow that to happen. They will come in, and they will set a tax rate, so that the state never ever has to come back for the next ten years. So it's always best that you all, the elected officials, who have accountability to the citizenry, manage that piece of it. The other piece of it is also, and this is something you can't control, the average value of the high, the high, the, the average value of the house prices in Bolivar are, you know, a little bit below the national average, so your property tax rate doesn't generate an awful lot of money. I think a penny generates approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars per penny of what you generate. Now, granted, you have sales tax, that's true, and you have other revenue sources that support the general government as well, but they're not nearly as stable as a property tax rate, okay? So to either, to, to overcome that, you either do one of two things, you get more houses in here through economic development, or you raise your prices of your houses. I'm not a fan of an expensive house. Okay? But maybe a combination of the two over time is what may happen. So that's, you know, that's it, the, uh, the positive, and I hate saying this when this microphone is hot, but the federal government is a very favorable creditor. They, they, they work, they, you know, if you do run into bumps, they work with you, far more so than some other creditors might. So that's an, that's a, that's a positive. And those are the ones that strike me when I'm, when I'm, when I was driving on my way over here today. Do you buy that?
I'm listening.
I know you are.
Well, I'll say, um, we talked, I've been, John's talked a, a lot on financial side of it, because he's, this is what they do. Uh, but I basically asked him if we just bit the bullet, and I really didn't think we could do that anyway, but if we was to bite the bullet, write the check, what would that look like? And, I mean, I already felt like it would be way more than what we could handle, but if we phase this out, I really would like to see us, you know, don't just, just say, because like you said earlier, this, we may not can write a check today and get all this tonight like we wanted, but we, and in my opinion, if we start somewhere, we start, and we start with one phase where we purchase the armory, get the wire set up and going, we've already started identifying grant funding on the ball field side. We go back in a few years and look at the second phase and build on the gymnasium, or, you know, phasing this out. But I would ask the council, I would ask you guys, like, ask them the questions you got, but I just, when we look at this, I really want us to consider starting somewhere like you mentioned, a launching pad, you know, seventeen, twenty million might be way more than what we can handle, but four million is comfortable enough to secure the property and get started on getting some programming and some stuff happening. Um, and just build on that and grow on that, but that's, I personally would just like to ask the council for this support, and I just wanted to say that, but until John, thank you, he's been, uh, I'll probably call him way more than he cared to, you know, I, I'm just thinking of random stuff. This, thank, this is my first time seeing the report too, and he's just assured me that he could get something that we could live within our means. And me personally, and I, I don't mean this in, to any disrespect on the council, but none of us can have the credentials that they have that we can say what that is, they do have that, and that's why I'm telling you, just find out where we was at, so.
You're kind, you're, you're kind, but you know, this is, this is, I think, where our firm really shines, is helping, you know, the smaller communities that don't have.
Debt balance out of the general fund over the next probably three years. Would you suggest that, or would you suggest we take some of the fund balance and paying off some of the existing debt to, to free up some, some, some capital, some, some capital money?
Six is one, half a dozen the other, quite frankly, because, you know, once you get past the four years, if you look at it, what's, what's being left, what's happened, being left be sustained is another rural development loan, and it's just an itty-bitty number. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be overly aggressive with robbing the piggy bank, because remember, that money that's sitting in there right now is sitting probably in LGIP or a local bank with, you know, with CDs and that sort of thing, and it's earning a favorable return. And the interest rate that you're paying on your current debt, because it's so old, the rates are very low. So you're actually having, you're having, in effect, an arbitrage, you're earning more than what you're paying. So for that very reason, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that.
Well, I'm glad that you presented this in this way, because I immediately thought, there's no way we can do a twenty-five million dollar project like that. But, um, well, they say, how do you eat an elephant, one bite at a time, right?
Yes.
So I am, I, I, I mean, I feel better about starting and doing it in phases, uh, getting things off the ground, because we have some other things that we want to do, and if we tie ourselves up with this,
Yes, ma'am.
we won't be able to do anything else for the next forty years.
Yes, ma'am.
And there are gonna be other things that we do want to do in our community.
And you do have natural growth, you know, in your revenues, and it's roughly around, you know, two percent on, on average. That's not substantial enough to, to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna grow, I'm gonna grow into making my debt payments, which is never a, a strategy I recommend for any of my clients, or my sons, as they're starting to set up home themselves. Um, but it's, you know, it is something to, you know, to consider, um, and the other thing is too, you have appraisals. And how you address those appraisals, you know, when you go back and you get the certified rate, you know, we generally like to set it back to a, a, a revenue neutral number. There may be some times that you might want to consider that, and maybe keep some of those pennies to generate and, and to support the local government.
Mr. John?
Yes, sir.
Forgot your last name.
Warner, yes, sir.
What?
Warner.
Warner, okay, Mr. Warner.
Yes, sir.
On this, uh, you were speaking of moving the needle past the yellow line here.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, it looked like it's either, about what I'm getting from you now, that's why I wanted you to correct me if I'm wrong, to either raise property tax or sale tax.
No, sir, not, I'm, I'm not recommending you do any of these to do this project, okay? But I did suggest that you might want to consider, have, considering getting some additional revenue just to support your regular, uh, uh, operations for the city. I, I do.
To get that extra revenue, the only way we can get extra revenue would be.
Through property taxes.
There you go.
Yes, sir, but not for this project, but not for this project, I want to be perfectly clear, not for this project.
He's saying in general, we need to raise, whether we do this project or not.
Yeah. I, I, I asked, I asked the mayor, we were have, we were, we were, we were having a few minutes together, and I asked him, I said, when was the last time you had a property tax increase? Thank you, councilwoman. You see, and unless you have a. You see, unless you have a really dynamic economy.
It's been well over twenty years.
It's been twenty years since we raised?
But then again, but here's the good thing though, that's a testimony, that's a testimony to you all, the mayor, the staff. To be able to maintain this city with the services that you provide without having, you know, astronomical revenue enhancers. I hate using the word tax.
Mr. John, on average, how often do cities raise their property tax, just in general, without any issues or nothing?
Well, they raise taxes, but never without issue, okay? Uh, unless. But you know, generally, generally speaking, when they do is when they do their budget, then they also, then they set, they, they pass a resolution. Or ordinance, I guess maybe, depends on how your charter reads, to, to, you know, to do a tax increase. And so, you know, you're, you're pretty far along in your, probably in your current budget process. And you haven't had to take that into consideration. But it's something I think that MTAS would certainly be able to help you do that. But that's, it's part of your budget resolution.
No, I understand the process of it, I was asking how often. I understand the resolution.
Oh, how often? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
How often?
Oh, shoot, I thought you were asking me an easy question. Generally speaking, how often do you get elected?
Every four years.
The first year of your fourth, of your four-year term is when I normally see it hit. And if it doesn't hit then, and as you get closer to your reelection, you're going to be less and less inclined, politically speaking, and I get it. To not have a tax increase because you want to have everything possible to be able to be, being reelected. Now, I'm sure all the terms here, are they staggered? So you're going to have fuss and cuss and discuss with the other members of the council about that. So that's, but that's, that's the reason why it's staggered like this, to kind of keep everybody honest. But generally, it's once every four years, if it's necessary. I mean, you've gone almost two decades, a score of years, without doing anything. So, you know, you might be able, you might be able, you might be able to last another twenty years if you did X amount. And I'm not throwing that number out there, councilman.
I think one of the balances is, you know, is you've got to balance services and what we provide.
Correct.
With taxes, no one likes taxes, I don't like taxes, they suck.
They can do enhancers.
But. But while we're always running into people who want more services, who want more ball fields, who want more, whatever it may be, you know. We can only afford so much and so it's definitely a balance that you've got to.
And that's a fantastic, meaningful political discussion.
So in your professional opinion, you think that we can withstand this four million dollar debt if we take it on?
Everything else remaining constant, yes. That's the economist in me, yes.
So if we take this four million debt on and say we wanted to take a portion out of our fund balance, say five hundred thousand, even a million dollars, we have a very healthy fund balance?
I'd be very careful about fund balance because some of that money is restricted already. And that's why you've been able to have the fund balances go up because you've been receiving these monies from grants and that sort of thing. So although you may be taking it out of part of your budget, uh, to do these construction and these other projects and things like that. And then they get supplemented by the grants that come in. At the end of the day, we need to net that out. And I couldn't read that in, in, in an audit, it doesn't read as well for governmental funds. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
So I guess my question is, say we do this four million dollar debt. And we really need five million dollars to do what, what we're about to do. I guess my question is, you know, you talk about buying, you know, even though we have restricted accounts, we still got free money just sitting there basically, even if it is.
About five point seven five million.
Right, so say we, say, I'm just throwing a number out, say we want to do this four million debt and then take out a million out of our fund balance to help fund this project as a buy-in, right?
Sure.
Do you think that would be healthy?
Yes. I think that would be, I think that would be fine. If that's what this council wants to do. But also remember you're depleting your cash and cash-like equivalents by, you know, approximately eighteen percent.
Yeah. But you also offset it by the interest that you're not having to pay on additional million, correct?
The good thing about USDA loan is, yes, you do pay interest on it. But it's forty years. So, you know, yeah, you have an interest expense, but you also have forty years of flexibility. When you don't have any money in your pocket, your flexibility becomes very limited. So that's, but, so here's the good thing though, as I mentioned earlier. If you, if, 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 if the city starts generating additional money and at the end of the day, it's generated a surplus. A very wise thing to do would be turn around and take that money and put it to paying off this debt in advance. And you, you literally apply the money and the debt on the back end starts shortening up. And the reason why you, and what happens when that, when that occurs is you're now also shortening up or you're lowering the overall interest expense that you're paying today. So that's a, that's a real positive for you. So your net, net's not a hundred percent of what you've just put into it.
Yeah, I guess my question was from the basis of, you know, this four million, make no mistake, is going to cost us about nine million dollars over the course of forty years. You know, so I guess my question was from, we got to figure out how we're going to fund this, right? And you got to think outside the box and come up with different scenarios. It's not cookie cutter, it's not one way, we got to think of other ways to fund this project. And if we need to, to take debt out for a portion of it, and even if we took out five hundred thousand out of our fund balance, we still have over five million dollars still in our fund balance tomorrow.
But you're current, but you're also currently using current funds to pay for debt. About two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe. So, you know, if you keep applying those dollars over time. As a matter of fact, going back, if you go back and you look at that last graph, uh, you can see where all of a sudden the debt falls below. You're, you're, you know, servicing all of your debt falls below the existing revenue that you have to support current debt. Take that extra money and start applying it to the USDA loan. Or you could use it to pay off the one that has the real small debt service that's outstanding, pay it off. You, those are the kind of options that you can use right now. You don't have to do anything dynamic or wildly different, given the resources you have right now. This is, this is manageable. It's just big for the city of Bolivar. But again, that, that part of the discussion is this side of the microphone.
Any other questions for Mr. John?
You've been very helpful.
I've enjoyed this and I'm, I'm really pleased to be given the opportunity to work with you all. And I look forward to seeing this thing through.
I, uh, I think the world of John, I've known, I guess all, since I've been mayor, he's been very helpful to us even before we done business with him. And John, he's not, he, like he just said, he don't really, you know, I ain't gonna say he don't care about the project, but he's looking at numbers and that's it. And I appreciate him, he's been real helpful.
Thank you.
But like I said, we are the situation, I didn't want us to take on a whole bunch of debt just to have everything. But I do want us to really strongly consider phasing this out. I tell you, process moving forward, uh, if we want to continue to do this. Of course, uh, we've already brought John home, but he will put together all the resolutions. USDA is doing the environmental, uh, hopefully it'll be done next thirty days or so. Uh, they will, they basically do everything honestly on the financial aspect. Uh, we have to pass it when they bring it to us. Um, and then the intimate financing they talked about on construction side and all that, they worked through that as well. Uh, I will say this, the armory is up for, they are holding the armory for us to purchase. They do plan to put it on the public, they plan to put it out for the public to buy it if we don't make some kind of commitment before this month is out. Now, I'm not saying it's not, I'm not saying that won't, it's, well, it still won't be there in June, but they've held it up until this point. And there are those, the funds from that sale, they've budgeted those funds to go to their budget for this year. So they, they really want us to, you know, do what we're going to do or they are prepared to put it on the market to sell it to the public.
And what was the, what was the sale price?
Nine seventy-five. Um, and that nine seventy, with this four million, that nine seventy-five will cover that as well as the first phase in remodeling that building to get it used. Um, we will, my, my thoughts is, as we look at finishing the LPRF this with the, uh, Sand Beach Lake now, which will be closed out at the end of this year. Look at applying for the LPRF for the ball fields there at that, uh, spot. Um, and as, like I said, as we go through this and we do see growth, we, we buy into it as we do it. I just really would like us to strongly consider starting somewhere, just making our first start.
We can do all in the first phase too, right?
Well, phase one would be purchasing the building.
Purchasing building and land and what, that sounds good.
And then we'll move forward on, you know, other, seeking other opportunities to, as we move out into the other phases.
How much is the first phase besides the building, not much renovations worth?
Yes, hold on, let me look through my email. I think it was two, three? It was in that part, does anybody have it with them by chance? It's in my office. Uh, yes, but no, that's all in one amount. It's, it looks like that.
Oh, is it like, is that it?
Uh, was it, yes. So interior to remodel the armory is two point two, uh, two, two million, you got, you're bald as paper. Two million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, nine hundred dollars. The site purchase is nine seventy-five. The gem, the gem purchase was seven million, four seventy-eight for the new construction. So the, I'm sorry.
Sorry, so with the seven hundred thousand that we would have left over if we did the four million, what would that go towards?
Whatever the engineering and whatever, so we won't pull, we only pull what we need. So we don't, we'll get approval, if we get approval for four million, we wouldn't pull that. You would just, you would just pull from the debt what you would, what the construction would be.
And do you think the four million would get us where we need to be right now? Or do you think that we need addition on the size of that?
Um, it'll start the first phase, uh, will it do the whole thing? Absolutely, by far.
Definitely not, I'm saying is four million dollars enough for right now?
For the phase, oh, absolutely, yes, for phase one on the YMCA part and purchasing the armory, yes. And that's not, that's, that's numbers, well.
You said right.
Right, it's two point two six.
And then what we do, uh, once we get to that point, as we seek other funding opportunities is, we, we have it now. Like we have a place, we have a location, we know what we're doing, we know what we're building to, and we will continue to do that, that would be the.
Would we be able to get a facilities grant?
That's optional too, see, and we then, we then, uh, I then apply for, well, I can't apply for the community facilities grant. Because we have one open on the, um, neighborhood building. But once that's open, I mean, sorry, once that's closed, then we can apply for funding on that as well as the Y. So once they are here now, they can, they can apply. So we had already talked about them applying for a community facility grant for the pool. And something else that we haven't discussed in this meeting tonight, I think we talked about in the last meeting. We're not, I'm not proposing that we give them this building, they're not asking for it for free. We'll charge fair market rent on whatever commercial property is rented for. They will, they're prepared to pay that amount yearly, so there's funds that could go back into the project as well. And then, I'm sorry, and then on the, like I said, on the ball fields, we are still, the ball fields was never in this number anyway. Uh, the ball fields has always been a funding part from LPRF or other entities. Uh, but this show, like, I mean, us moving forward really shows, uh, the community as well as other people that may be potentially looking to invest. That we are doing something and it's not just a pitch, pitch.
Susan, you're saying enough talking. I think we just, I'd like to make the motion, we'll go ahead and approve phase one.
A second.
So we can move forward.
All right, I have approval for, uh, the continued on part of the four hundred, I'm sorry, the four million for phase one. Motion by Ms. Ray, second by Mr. Williams, we'll cast your votes.
I can get it pulled up here.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? One, 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 I'll, okay, uh, do a roll call so we have.
Mr. Brown?
Hold a second, Mr. Williams.
I think Mr. Williams had another question.
Before roll call, Mary. What do we still owe down at, uh, Sand Beach?
What do we owe?
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, what, we don't owe him?
We don't owe anything on that, at Sand Beach.
Now, we, now, we got a, now, that's a grant now, we, we, it was like a fifty fifty grant match. But we got that set aside in monies from ARPA that we did two years ago or whatever, that's already.
Okay, 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 that's why I was kind of a little confused, okay.
Oh, there's work, okay, there we go, now you can vote.
You don't want to work this time? Put me down, aye. I can't get you to come on.
Motion carried, all right, next, before we leave, uh, they, did you, do you have a competent resolution from the arm? They, they did send up last night, now.
They were wearing me out about this.
I will, yeah, they, so.
I don't know what it's supposed to say.
Um, this resolution here, are we on this here, buddy? This resolution is basically what we just passed, but Kevin, can you understand what this, uh, the state, they got a hundred attorneys, I don't understand. Basically, it's saying that we're going to. Yeah, that's, they've, they've sent multiple emails to Kevin and that was what was left. Basically saying that we are going to purchase the property, uh, is what that is. But what I would like to, uh, I would like to get the permission from the council to work with Kevin and our Lisa and John, he's left. On the financing, uh, for the nine seventy-five to prevent them from putting it on the market. Uh, and what I mean by that is this resolution, if this resolution suffices, then fine. But if not, I may call you guys for a special call meeting or to figure out with USDA, how long this funding is going to take them to get to us. And if that's not enough time, we may have to, whether it be use fund balance and USDA replace it. Or I don't know how that's going to look. Uh, but like I said, they've called and emailed me, Kevin both, trying to get us to close. And I'm telling them, I'm not writing a million dollar check until I, you know, know that the USDA is going to reimburse us, so.
I make the motion that we allow the mayor up to a million dollars to purchase the armor. A million, right, I mean, that's a lot.
Nine seventy-five, I don't even need the, the extra twenty-five thousand.
However the exact amount is, not.
You just want to amend it and put it in here?
Yeah, you do.
I amend that to add, add the price on that, approve the purchase up to nine seventy-five.
Nine seventy-five, that's the motion.
That way you can send it through, but there's a dollar amount.
I can have a motion by Chris, a second by Mr. Williams, all right? All right, motion carried, thank y'all so much, that's, I, I, thank you, I can't say it enough. I think we really going to be, have something to be proud of and thank y'all for that support. Uh, that's it, motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. McKenna, second by Mr. Williams, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?